All right, it is six thirty and I will call it to order. Welcome, everyone. And I will call the roll. John, myself present. Rebecca?
I'm here.
Phil?
Yep.
Neil?
Nope.
Nope. Mike said he might be late, or he would definitely be late if he showed up. He's on his way from another.
Peter said he's out.
Mark?
Here.
Susan?
Here.
And alternate members, Zach Terrell, not present, and Michael Bouchard and Peter Julia, both already wrote in to say they would not make it tonight. Okay. Review of minutes. From our January eighteenth standing board meeting.
I just had one, maybe a typo on page four, the second to last paragraph, something about the stature language. I'm assuming that, is that statutory?
I assume so, yeah.
Okay. I think it's just missing a Y. I just wanted to make sure I was understanding what that was.
Well, if that's a stature, it's not really still.
Right. Otherwise, I thought there was a lot in the minutes. And this covered it. I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes from January eighteenth.
Second?
And further discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? All right, the minutes are approved. Are there any public comments not related to the business on the agenda this evening? Okay. Communications received by the board. Joseph?
Yeah, I'll keep it brief. The board may recall that, oh, it was probably quite some time ago now. I actually don't remember the date of the meeting, but we had Justin Skelly from DPC Engineering Inn who was working on a stormwater asset management program for the town, and we held a public meeting and spoke with him and also some folks from New Hampshire Department of Environmental Services who gave us the grant for that for that asset management program. There's been a little bit of a, I suppose you could say, delay. The engineering firm that we'd hired had been having some internal staffing challenges, I understand, so they have suggested a new timeline. So their new timeline for the remainder of the grant includes staff training April and May of 2024, draft deliverables by May of 2024, wrap-up meeting June of 2024, and final deliverables by July of 2024. So that would be the completion of the asset management program. But the wrap-up meeting may involve another public session, depending on what we need to discuss at that point. But just sort of bringing that back up and letting folks know that that's still ongoing. We haven't heard from the engineer in a while, but they've given us this new proposed timeline and they're confident that they can get it done on the timeline that they're now suggesting before the grant ends.
And if I recall correctly, was this, this was stormwater asset managements throughout the town? So will the delay allow us to have an accurate management of the improved stormwater assets on Main Street?
Yeah, that would be my understanding. So they've represented that with the new timeline, they can do everything that they were initially contracted to do, which was a full inventory and an evaluation of a lifespan and coming up with some type of usable asset management database that, you know, is going to be something that the highway folks are comfortable using out in the field. So when they're actually replacing a culvert, they can kind of live update and it can also help them prioritize different projects and be a little more proactive with managing those stormwater assets.
At least have a better database so that if they have regular flooding, they can identify which culverts may be undersized, which ones may be a priority for replacement. I suspect that, will that be a CIP item if they come up with a plan to replace those?
I would, I would think it would definitely be one that Highway would want to incorporate into their CIP projections for, you know, and I guess there's the balance of operations and maintenance of regular repairs versus these, you know, these capital projects. Yeah, but I imagine those will definitely be things that we want to incorporate into the CIP once that information is compiled.
Thank you.
Well, thank you for the update. And we've done all of that without using one of my favorite acronyms.
The SWOMP?
Yeah.
It's a good one.
Let's see. So new business, public hearing number three on the following 2024 proposed zoning amendments, accessory dwelling units and fairgrounds, road, residential overlay district. So I assume some of you are here for this part of the meeting, and I will do one of these at a time, starting with the accessory dwelling units and then going to the overlay district. And I'll read the language here and not of the full amendment, but of the description of the amendment, and then I'll open a public hearing and we can get some feedback and see where we are. I will remind everyone that at this phase, or this like phase in the timeline, basically, the finalized language has to be in by, it's within a few days. I forgot the exact date. So there's no more time to amend this and put it to another public hearing and rehear it again. It's basically, it's up or down tonight, and there's no further amendments to be made to the amendments. Yeah, so with that said, I'll read the first one and then I'll open a public hearing. So Article four, Section four sixteen, amend the accessory dwelling unit requirements by removing reference to a requirement for conditional use permit and removing the statement about where they are permitted to eliminate redundancy with other provisions for permitted uses in Article three. Also remove inaccurate language referencing state statutes and simplify the purpose statement section and change required parking spaces to a minimum of one for an accessory dwelling unit in addition to the spaces required for a single-family home. If need be, we can get into some of the details of the language, but with that said, I will open a public hearing. It is now six thirty-nine. And before we move to public comments right away, do any members of the board have anything else to say on this amendment? I know we've talked about this quite a bit already.
I wasn't at the last meeting. I read through the minutes, or the last hearing on this.
Yes.
Why did this come back for one more hearing? Was there a change that had been made or was there further discussion that was needed?
So the only change that has been made from the previous language is that, actually, I have to remind myself of which amendment this is. Yeah, so it's accessory dwelling units. So there was a discussion of changing the accessory dwelling unit mandates for a public hearing and special exception in the overlay, which is the next one. And then if that happened, that would change the description of the permissions for special exception for ADUs in the ADU amendment. And rather than trying to specify where, which we did previously in the ADU section, where it would be permitted or not, we simply decided to remove that language since that's listed elsewhere in the zoning ordinance anyway. So this way, even
This will stand alone.
It makes it, this stands alone, and it means if we make changes again in the future, we don't have to track down like
We only make one change.
Yes, and that covers everything.
Okay, great. Thank you.
So that's, that's basically what changed. We just removed some of that language. Everything else remained the same.
Yeah, and generally, this amendment is, removing the conditionally used permit was because it was becoming burdensome to the board to review these, the number of permits, and we were all in agreement that the process to get a building permit for an EDU is sufficient in making sure that it adheres to the criteria established in the zoning ordinance.
Except that we, in this process of these hearings, have changed that for single-family residential and now also for the overlay, which we'll get to in a moment.
Okay.
Which would require a special exception.
Yes.
A special exception, but not a conditionally used permit.
So we go to the zoning board.
Yeah, the zoning board instead of us, okay.
Yeah. So here, we're basically talking about it's the ADUs and what's changing from our current language is removing some extraneous language that didn't actually meet state law and some other things. And reducing the parking spaces to one mandatory for the ADU in addition to anything else required for the single-family home where it was two before, and then to remove the language that specifies where they are permitted and how, because that's covered elsewhere.
Great.
Are there any public comments about this particular amendment? Yeah? If you'd like to, please come up and identify yourself.
My name's Ed Sleeper. I own property over on Cooksville Road.
Okay.
I apologize for being kind of a Johnny come lightly, but
If you can go to the podium just because there's a microphone there and sometimes it's hard to pick up the sounds in the room?
Yes, I reiterate, I'm Ed Sleeper. I own property on Cooksville Road, and I came to the meeting to just to try to understand it better. And so I have a question as to what was the original purpose for creating this overlay zone?
So, if you could, so the overlay is the second amendment here.
Okay.
And we'll get to that in a second.
Okay.
I imagine a bunch of people here might be here for the overlay discussion.
Okay.
This one is just about accessory dwelling units.
Okay. They're not connected?
They are connected, but how they're allowed in the overlay, we'll talk about separately when we get to the overlay. In fact, where they're allowed, and we were just talking about, we removed that completely from the section here on the ADUs.
Okay.
And this reduces the number of parking spaces required and it, to one, and it, like you said, there was some language in there that was erroneous in terms of what it qualified for in state law and stuff, and we just decided to take that out as well.
Okay.
So the overlay, we'll get to in a moment.
Okay. Sounds good.
Hold your thought.
Okay.
Any other comments or questions about the ADU amendment? Okay. I'm going to leave the public hearing open for entirety of our discussion of the zoning amendments. Back to the board.
I'm comfortable with this, and I think we're, we cleaned it up so that it can move forward regardless of the other zoning changes, and I think this should have, in my opinion, I think this should have broad public support. I think it's, we've simplified the process for the majority of people seeking to install or to have a, an accessory dwelling unit, and, you know, this is part of our goal of providing for more cost-effective housing opportunity in the town.
Mike?
One item that hasn't been brought up is some lots in the ag zone are pre-existing and can be some very small lots from point one of an acre. I'm thinking of the small lot that is the old Grange on Route three to some quarter-acre lots. There's probably, I don't know, in town. I think we did an assessment. Is there, what, a hundred of them? Quarter acre, maybe a hundred, half acre, maybe a few hundred.
Even in the single family, there are some tenth acre lots.
Yeah.
So we covered it in the single family that an ADU would have to get a special exception, but there are some lots in the ag zone that are point one of an acre, quarter of an acre, half an acre. And I think of someone who's got a hundred acres, it's not a big deal. You know, their ADU may not even be noticed for ten years before their neighbors might find out, but on a small point one of an acre or a small quarter of an acre, it might be a bigger deal. And that's what I lost sight of when we were talking about single family and getting the, getting the special exception for that. I'm wondering whether there's a middle ground here where it's not a big change, but just to say, hey, in keeping with the small lots like we did with the single family, what if we did two and a half acres or two acres, you'd still need to go for a special exception. But if you got more than two and a half acres there, there's probably a good deal of distance between the buildings and maybe it's not that big of a deal and we can reassess it another year.
So my thoughts about this are, well, I mean, A would be, if you have a really small lot, you still have to follow various dimensional requirements and setbacks and all of that. But B, the way this is written at this point, that's a use table issue which we've already passed and put to the vote at town meeting and the ballot, and all of the uses have been removed from this amendment. So all of those are already put forward to, in the use table, have already been put forward to town meeting. And we can discuss that another year again if we want to change that and make another amendment to the use table, but it's not covered in this particular amendment. So it might be a potential discussion for another year. How do we all feel?
Are we keeping the hearing open?
Yeah, we're going to keep it open for the remainder of the zoning amendments.
Are you looking for a motion from the board at this point?
If you want to make one.
Well, I thought we had to close the hearing on this one before we did that.
We didn't, we didn't do that at our previous public hearings on the zoning amendments, so I think we're okay.
I would move that we move amendment seven, Section four sixteen on accessory dwelling units to the town, to the legislative body.
I second that.
Any further discussion?
I would just say this has been a hard, a hard one for me. And I could go either way and
On accessory dwelling units? Really? Okay.
What about the, I mean, is it the, the table of use issue that you're talking about or what's, what's at issue here for you?
My only issue is that if there's a small lot and someone wants to put in ADU, they go to the town. And the way that it stands now, the town pretty much rubber stance it as long as the lot is big enough and can handle it.
And it meets all the
Meets all the criteria.
That are in the zoning ordinance.
Planner would rubber stamp it and they start bringing two-by-fours then. And electricians and plumbers.
As of now, doesn't it still require a conditional use permit?
As of now, before
Before this change.
Before the potential changes this year, yes.
It needed a, yeah, go for it in the planning board.
So they come to us.
So we made a change that if they want to put an ADU in the single-family zone, they would have to alert by letter their neighbors. So the neighbors could have some impact by saying, hey, you know, there's a lot of cars going in and out, you know, all day long and, you know, it's only when the shade's half down, or, you know, that's type of good information that the zoning board might want to know before another unit on that lot. Or, you know, maybe it's not the shade, maybe there's something else with things that are going on in the
Like illegal things?
Legal.
That you'd call the police for?
You get to own apartments to know how this stuff works. Claremont, not this town. But you, if there might be things that the town may not know that's going on, and if the abutters aren't, haven't gotten any type of notice, they may not have a chance to come forward and let the town know, hey, you know, there's three unregistered vehicles, maybe this stuff needs, which happens a lot, maybe this needs to be taken care of before he gets the stamp to go ahead and start building. That's, and it could be a whole host of reasons that the neighbors might want to have a chance just to be notified to come in and just say their piece before it just happens.
And I'll just remind everyone, that is a use table issue, which is separate from this issue at this point. But noted. I think it's a different amendment where that's needed or not. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions? All right, the motion passes. So this will go to the ballot on Tuesday, what is that, March twelfth? March twelfth? All right, so in our second amendment that we're considering this evening, Article three, zones, maps and regulations, and this is where we get to the overlay. Amend Article three, the zoning map, and Article fourteen to create a Fairgrounds Road residential overlay district which would preserve the underlying zoning while allowing property owners the option of using the overlay district standards as an alternative, which allows dimensional standards to be in accordance with the single-family residential zone and allow single-family detached, single-family attached, and two-family dwelling units as permitted uses. And accessory dwelling units as permitted by special exception. This district would overlay portions of the A and H C districts roughly covering land along both sides of Fairground Road stretching west from Main Street to the old Fairgrounds site and as far north as the Plymouth Town boundary. And just as a reminder, if you've been following along all the way, this particular amendment was changed in one way since our last hearing, which is to make accessory dwelling units a, not a permitted use, but a permitted by special exception. Which would mean you have to go to the zoning board for approval.
John, do you want to address the question that was already raised about the motivation for why we did this?
Oh.
You were on the housing opportunity. You're better suited to summarize that, I think.
Looks like I can toss it off to somebody else in the
I can take stab at it if you want.
If you'd like.
I think we were looking for many different ways to allow housing for, because of the housing demand in Plymouth. The value of what was happening to the prices of homes in Plymouth, that it was being priced out for young families or folks looking for affordable housing, that we thought we would try and do what we could to bump up the inventory. And by allowing an acreage to have more housing units on it, to have that ability, could help to increase the housing units, which would hopefully at some point start to allow the prices to come down a little bit with supply and demand. We looked at many different other options, and we decided, we looked at this as being maybe the least evasive, least problematic for the town, rather than allowing, we also looked at allowing more than six units per building to get more units of rentals. So we thought that would be a little bit easier for the town to accept. And we looked at it that at one point, if you had town water and town sewer, you could go to a much smaller lot, like a quarter acre in some zones. And we got away from that at some point and only allowed that acreage to go to half acre. So we thought, rather than allowing the entire town, that we would identify one area that already has water and already has town sewer, already identified with those services, that we would try it kind of as a test, an overlay for that single area. And what we were hoping was by notifying everybody, which we didn't have to do, but we decided to notify everybody within that zone with letters, so we could get your input on whether you thought that was a great idea, because there are some people with acreage that may like it and there may be some that may not. So this is our chance to, to listen to you and, and get your input.
Thank you. Well said, Mike. Just to clarify a couple of other things. So the identification of this particular area as a possible place for more housing, for all the reasons that Mike explained well, has been around for quite some time, going back to the master plan several years ago, as well as some of the outreach we were doing this time around with this grant we've been working with. So that, that's worth noting as well. And the other thing, just technically how this is implemented is worth noting, if you want to use the dimensions of the overlay, which are the smaller dimensions, you can do that for housing and the specific types of housing identified here. If you want to do, if you want to do some of the other uses in the ag zone that are not housing and residential uses, you still need to use the ag zone's dimensional requirements. Basically because if you're not doing residential, you might not want to like have a neighbor on a really small plot of land doing something more commercial, for example. And so this really kind of, you either choose the ag zone regulations as they're currently written or you choose the overlay. And you can do either, but you can't mix and match them. So you can't do an ag zone use on a really small plot of land.
If I can say one thing too, you know, one of the alternatives could have been that we could have proposed to rezone this whole area as single-family residential, but that's somewhat limiting in terms of allowing the continued use, you know, continued agricultural use. You know, there's certainly some properties in there. You know, there's some, there's some farmland in there. So, you know, the nice thing about the overlay is if you like the agriculture zoning, you can continue to do what you're doing. But if you are interested in, you know, somewhat more, you know, more dense development as we would have in the single family, that's also an option, so it
You don't, you don't lose any rights by doing this, but you add a few more for residential uses. And we already have a lot of housing there, so kind of builds on that and utilities, as Mike was saying. Do you have any follow-ups or?
No, I mean, I, so the, you're not saying that you have to choose if you're in that area whether you're willing to take part in one or the other. It's, it is a basically
New proposals.
For new development.
I see.
Yeah. So if you're there, you can just keep doing what you're doing.
I know, I was maybe, I might go back twenty years ago, I was considering putting a mobile home on my lot for my son to live in. They were, you know, a young couple, starting out. And at the time, I was told, I went to the town, I said, you know, what I was thinking of doing, they said, well, you know, yeah, you could do that, but we'd rather you subdivided it, made it a separate tax map. And I said, yeah, you know, it's a financial situation here, you know, don't want to, you know, incur more costs, you know, and possibly it would be a temporary thing too, so, you know, I'm just, wondering about stuff like that. I mean, I've thought about possibly putting a, a small place there, either using for, you know, helping family members out or even rent it or whatever, but, you know, I was just wondering if this was something that was going to kind of put an end to that, but it doesn't sound like that's
Shouldn't. You should get, have an advantage that you can do a smaller lot if you wanted to.
Making it more liberal.
For the most part, yes, and, well, certainly yes. And we don't want to like speak to an individual proposal or something, but I mean, manufactured housing is not listed as one of the uses for the overlay, but certainly it does, does make it easier to subdivide the smaller lot for residential uses, yeah.
John, if I recall though, I mean, we have approved conditional use permits where someone has added a manufactured home to an existing single-family lot.
Well, yeah, I'm this
As an ADU.
As an ADU.
As an ADU, yes.
But I mean, sometimes, you know, when it gets to developments of manufactured homes, that can be different.
Yes. I'm just trying to be careful not to speak to any individual questions about their property.
Right, right. No, I agree. I agree.
Let's say if this proposal did go through, I know you don't want to speak to this specific thing, but let's say I did want to put up a small, not a, not a mobile home, but a small building, maybe a cabin, but it would have all the facilities of a house, you know, plumbing, heating, whatever. Would that be something that's possible now and later?
That's the one we just approved, actually. That's, that's the accessory dwelling unit.
If it's small enough. If it had to be less than a thousand square feet, currently you'd have to come before the planning board to get a conditional use permit. If this goes through, you would go to the zoning board.
If the other amendment, the one we already approved goes through.
Residential colocation.
Well, right.
Yeah.
There are a couple.
What's the difference between the way it exists now and the way it would exist if we, if we pass this proposal?
It's, well, there's cascading amendments, so right now, if you were to put a It's, well, there's cascading amendments, so, right now, if you were to put an accessory dwelling unit on a piece of property, as long as it meets all the dimensional requirements, right now you'd come to the planning board for a conditional use permit, provided all the zoning ordinances pass. Actually, this is a good question, because you could be.
He's in the ag zone.
He's in the ag zone, so it would be by right.
You would just come to.
Unless you wanted to be by the, unless you wanted to be by the overlay, then you could go to the zoning board for a, for a special exception, so it would be.
Right. You'd be better off.
That's really interesting.
Yeah, so if you have a property already in the ag zone.
Special exception wouldn't apply there.
You do not need a special exception for an accessory dwelling unit. If you start subdividing, you, like, being anybody really, but start subdividing and using the overlay to do so with smaller lot sizes, and then you want to add an ADU to that, then you need to go to, you would need to go, it just passes, to get a special exception to do that, on a smaller lot. But if you just have an existing lot in the ag zone, if everything passes, you would no longer need a.
By everything passes, you mean everything meets, the structure meets, oh, the zoning ordinance. I just got really confused there.
But the condition, but the table of uses changes, and the minimum lot size has changed too, so like, it's possible you could actually.
So this is going to free up more ability for someone to subdivide and put.
That is the goal. That is the, that is our intent, is to create more opportunity for housing to be developed, even if it's infill development, yes.
Especially where we have the utilities to do so.
Yeah, to reduce the regulatory barriers to encourage housing that people can afford.
I like that idea.
Okay. Would you like to come up and speak?
Brian just heard something he didn't like.
No, it's not that, I think that, you know, I'm not against the overlay, I'm just, to kind of piggyback on what was said, yeah, I mean, it gives the opportunity for more housing.
True.
In an already densely populated area of Fairgrounds Road. And I understand why it would be easier to add housing there. However, there are many people who live there because they don't necessarily like the densely populated downtown. My family lived there for ten years, in the single-family residential area downtown. Ten years. We moved to Fairgrounds Road to have less dense housing. This is already a densely populated, there's, you know, the fifty-five-plus community was just put in, and it's, you know, that adds to the density already existing in that, this portion of Fairgrounds Road. So this would make it more dense, easier to make it more dense, densely populated, adding more homes, subdividing property to add places that, you know, I mean, if we stretch, I mean, there's more ag area on Fairgrounds Road, but it's right here because it's easier. And it will make, this makes it for the possibility of becoming more densely populated in this I'm not against this, again, as, you know, in theory, I do think it needs more time. I think that there needs to be more people on Fairgrounds or in this area to weigh in. I understand that we had, you know, there was letters, you know, delivered to us, and some of it confusing if somebody's just coming in and, you know, coming into it and realizing, hey, wait, what's going on? I'm not for this going to town this year, I'll just say that. Mainly because of the possibility of it becoming more dense in the area where I live, so.
Okay, thank you. Would anyone else like to speak to this amendment? Bring it back to the board for now. Any comments or thoughts?
My only thoughts are, there are going to be questions about this, and I feel like it would benefit us if we had a couple people outside the polls to answer questions about this.
Mm-hmm.
On voting day, is that in the planning at all, or?
I want to actually talk about that in a moment, a little later in the meeting.
Yeah.
So yes, don't let me forget to come back to that, but.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, I was just going to, but yeah, go ahead.
Do you need to do some type of a public information, public meeting before March 12th?
I would like to have a, we were, the HOP committee was talking about having an informational meeting, and I wanted to bring that to the board tonight, to try to schedule that, perhaps at our.
We can start our session.
At our work session in March, which is like the week before the vote, and be able to answer questions from the public, and, yeah. So I was just going to say about this particular, so yes, absolutely, I, maybe we're going to be at the polls as well to answer questions, but I certainly want to have this kind of informational session that some of us have been talking about. And we'll talk about that a little bit later this evening, perhaps once we get through these amendments. My own take on this is that there was outreach done at, for the last master plan, there's been a whole lot of outreach done this year, trying to get feedback. We've done a lot of outreach during these public hearings, I mean, in terms of like the letters and stuff, like Mike said, try to get, like, people aware and to come out and speak up about these. And in terms of what the planning board and the HOP committee, as a subcommittee of the planning board, can do, we've done a lot to kind of really try to reach out to people. And it feels to me at this point, like, we've had the resources with this grant to do a lot of outreach, and we've got a lot of positive feedback about this potential overlay, and we've also got, heard some reticence about it as well. And at this point personally, I would want to just push it forward, and if the voters decide not to go for it, then that can happen. But I mean, I can't imagine this board doing much more outreach than we've already done to.
I agree. There was a strong amount of support at this, at the listening sessions, yeah. I would say that, you know, with the understanding that I think we're going to have an outreach meeting, and if we can have some, some members of the zoning, the planning board available to answer questions on the day of town meeting, I'm going to say that I recommend that we move Article Three Zone Maps and Regulations to the legislative body.
Get another comment from the audience.
I see that, I have not closed the public hearing, so that, it's okay.
I can hold my, I can, nobody's made a second yet, so I will, I will hold my motion.
I think you didn't, you said you recommend that we move, so I didn't even hear a motion.
You didn't say move.
Okay.
Yeah.
So technically.
All right, I'll wait.
Anyway, so.
If we're still in public hearing, let's take public.
We are, would you like to make a comment? The answer is yes.
Yeah, sorry. So I would like to recognize the work that you all have done, I'm not trying to diminish that. All I'm saying is that, you know, I understand you did outreach, I understand that there was listening sessions, I'm not sure how many people from those listening sessions actually lived in this area, I would be interested to know that. Maybe I would sit down and be quiet if there was a lot of people in this area that had listened and said, hey, yeah, this is a great idea. I'm sure there's other people in town that say, yeah, it's a great idea, let's, you know, let's promote development here in this area, because it's maybe not where they live. So that's why I'm speaking up, that's why I'm saying, hey, you know, maybe we should put, just push it off a little bit, off of this year's ballot, maybe, you know, I would be volunteering to work on this, I could try and get more people in this overlay, proposed overlay district, to sit with you guys, I just don't, this could affect numerous people in ways that I don't know if they fully grasp, as far as neighbors putting up, you know, what is proposed next to them, where they currently live. So that's why I just say I'm not for this push on the ballot this year, and I would be willing to sit on some sort of committee to further work on this as it is. So, that's it.
Thank you.
I have to say that I have, I think this is the right thing to present, I do have concerns about the, what we're asking the town to approve this year, and I think that this one is, they're all confusing. Having some of this very technical stuff getting approved by our general population is, it's a big ask. Because I think, you know, I've been on this board for nine and a half years, and there's things that I'm like, you know, have to really read through to understand. So I do have concerns that we're presenting something that doesn't have a lot of, that's not easily understood, and just reading through the notice, I'm assuming this is going to be the language that goes on the warrant.
Yes.
It's not straightforward, and, you know, having people at the polls, you know, I don't know if we need signs that say, like, not a candidate, or something that's, you know, so, something that makes it, you know, we're here to help you understand what's on the ballot, not to try and sway you to vote for us. But yeah, I just, I do feel like we're asking a lot of the town right now, of our voting population.
I think that was one of the reasons, I know for myself, I was happy that we were doing another public hearing on this amendment, because after listening to this gentleman last month, I could understand the fact that, you know, it's easy potentially for me to vote for this when I live well across town, it doesn't necessarily impact me. And it would be interesting to know, I think when we did some of the townwide meetings, we had people kind of pin where they lived, it might be interesting to see how many people who were there pinned this particular area, so they would, maybe would have gotten more information about it. Because it seems, I think this is the third meeting we've had on this amendment, you know, not that we've done a poll, but it seemed to me that maybe the folks that live in that area have more concerns than positive feelings. So I think that's just something we have to consider. Because, you know, it's like putting up windmills in a way for certain folks, like, yeah, if it's across town, you know, it's not, you know, it's not in my backyard type of thing, it's, or, I don't want that in my backyard. So I just, I think that's something we should consider.
Mike?
One of the listening sessions at the Bobcat Cafe, I had, actually had the two people that were residing in the potential overlay zone, and it wasn't explained exactly what was going to happen with it, but they said, yeah, overall they were happy with everything that we were talking about, but their concern was, the infrastructure's not there to handle it, and you have to take care, so the only two people that we really heard from said, it can't happen until the infrastructure's ready for it. And out of this board, I've probably been more, pushing this more than anybody, because I saw this as the good alternative to the other ideas that were coming forward. And I don't see the harm in waiting a year for this, because I can bet, as much outreach that we did, and Judy did an excellent job, it was up to us to try and get as many people to come forward, and I think in some ways we succeeded, in some ways, if each of us went and knocked on ten doors in that zone, and we asked them, are you where, they're going to have no clue. And that's seventy people out of whatever, no one has, we know, because we've been doing this for the last year and a half. So I would probably have to agree with Rebecca.
May I ask what you mean by a lack of infrastructure?
The amount of traffic on that road, the condition of the road they're concerned about, who's going to take care of that, the town doesn't have the money to.
So you're talking about the road?
The roads, mostly, the intersection is going to be, probably need some attention, both on Smith Bridge Road, which is not ready yet, there's probably a plan to do something, but we've been talking about a plan for fifteen years.
On the ten-year plan.
It does. So we're just not there yet, but we're close, and I would have to agree with Brian that he volunteered to work with us, I've been the guy out there before. And Brian's brought up some really good points, and I think he's willing to help us, let's go with what we've got for a base, and let's, we definitely don't have enough consensus from the people that live in that zone.
I, just in terms of the infrastructure issue, and first of all, the road issue, I mean, if this passes, it's very unprobable, it's not probable, that you're going to see just a boom of houses all of a sudden sprouting up everywhere, and a huge increase in traffic right away, and there is, in the ten-year plan, a proposal and a plan to improve that intersection on that side. And so I don't necessarily see that as a barrier, and one of the reasons that this place has been looked at is because it does have a lot of other infrastructure.
Water and sewer.
Like water and sewer, that really allow for a density that could, at least potentially, alleviate some of our housing needs. I mean, if you look at all of our amendments, I mean, this is the one that really has the potential, more than any others, to allow for some more affordable housing in our town, where we have the infrastructure to do that, and where we have some of the space to do that. As opposed to single-family residential, for example, which is pretty full already, and it had some outer lying areas. So.
Do you live in that overlay area?
No, I do not.
If I can say one thing, though, well, go ahead Rebecca.
No, it's okay, no, it's okay.
I'll go after you.
No, 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 I need to make sure that this is what I want to say.
So if I can say one thing, I mean, the process of zoning in general is never easy. You know, we talked about this a few years ago. You know, I can say with great confidence that nobody on this board looked at this area and said, I don't live there, let's put it there. You know, we looked at it and said, you know, what area has water and sewer, what area has other natural features that are favorable for development? There's not a lot of steep slopes in this area, there's not a lot of ledge-out crop, you know, there are other areas of town that have water and sewer that are less favorable. You know, the characteristics of land that are in this zone make it unique in this town as a good place to discuss an innovative proposal such as this overlay district. We didn't talk about going strictly to single-family in this, in this zone, so that it would have to be that, but we said, you know, let's give people the option, that if they have, if somebody wants to do a development of homes that is more in character with the single-family residential, that they could use those dimensional requirements. Or if they like their land as it is, and they want to keep it in agricultural use, they can do that. So, you know, I really think this is a very flexible and innovative way to allow people the choice of what to do with future developments. You know, I think to the existing concerns, you know, if you're on an existing lot, you know, there's, you know, we've already proposed the change to the, to the accessory dwelling unit, so that if that is approved, you know, anybody in this zone as it sits can add an accessory dwelling unit without a conditional use permit. Where the overlay comes into play is if somebody wants to create new lots, they can then use the smaller dimensional requirements of the single-family zone and not be bound to the lot sizes of the agricultural zone. So I actually think this is well thought out, it's, I don't, you know, I would like to say that this is not targeted because nobody on this committee or board lives there. You know, I have friends that are there. It's a nice area, and honestly, you know, I think it's, I do think there's untapped potential, but yes, I can understand that there would be a negative impact if there are families living there, because it's somewhat undeveloped, yeah, it would be a change for them, but, you know, their individual parcels don't have to be developed.
When we say somewhat undeveloped, given all the places in town where. When we say somewhat undeveloped, given all the places in town where we could target for the potential for added density, in many ways, it's least out of character in this area where there already is quite a bit of density.
I agree.
And so, we're not really thinking about an area where there is not already some density. And, I mean...
I don't think anybody's...
At some level, there's always room for more outreach and talking to more people. And I always want to hear from more people. But at the same time, I mean, I think we've been busting our butts this year trying to like, reach out to people and talk to people and get as much feedback as we can. And at some point, you have to say like, you know, "We did our diligence and..."
I think this board has done about as much outreach as a volunteer board can do.
We do have a message.
What does your master plan say?
Our master plan, I had mentioned this a few minutes ago, does indicate this as one of the areas for potential development for housing. And that was five, five and a half years ago, I guess, at this point. And so, that's been out there for a while as well and was also outreach that went to that process.
We do have a message in the chat comment. "We would like to express our appreciation that this proposed amendment does not curtail agricultural activities in the ag zone." From Claire Eckert and Chris Woods, 157 Fairgrounds. So, they did submit a written comment.
Yes. So, I would agree 100% with Phil that we identified why we identified this area. I would...there's nothing that I would contradict on that. It's just a matter of, from the beginning, I've wanted to see as much input from the folks that live in that potential overlay so that they could be here and give us their input. And we tried as hard as we could, but I just don't...
They all got a letter.
Yeah. And I just think that it would not be the end of the world to take one more year to look at it and bring it back next year.
I would also add that, I mean, typically, those who are not nervous about amendments don't show up. And the fact that we haven't heard more also might...part of that is, yeah, I mean, there are people who weren't paying attention, they got the letters, they didn't understand it or whatever. But it's also probably people, you know, who said, "Yeah, sure." And if it doesn't bother you, you might not to show up.
I don't disagree with you. I do think that's a fairly...we, yeah.
I mean, anecdotally, I've talked to some people who live there.
Yeah.
Who seemed absolutely fine with it. And I'm sure I could talk to other people who wouldn't be. And... It seems like one of the better and more well-thought-through opportunities we're trying to create here to allow people to build more housing that is affordable to our community. And I would personally be upset to see like, one of these more impactful opportunities not followed through with. I mean, that, yeah.
I don't think people are saying that units won't be followed...I'm not saying it shouldn't be followed through with. I'm just saying, let's take a little bit more time to the people who actually live in this town.
Yeah.
That's all...that's what I'm saying. I'm not trying to go against what you guys have done, how much time we've spent. I'm just...I just don't think that enough people, like, to your point, they got the letters. Yeah, you guys sent out letters. I'm not denying that. I had to go back and look at the...some of the terminology myself to sift through everything to make sense of it. Because I'm not sitting on that wall.
I will say, when it comes to that, this is complicated because, you know, we're getting at land use issues which aren't simple. And in New England, we've chosen a represent...you know, we've chosen a government style that relies on every citizen to vote. So, you know, there's...with that response...or with that benefit comes the responsibility to do some work to understand this. You know, other states have less direct forms of government where you elect somebody and they tell you what the zoning's going to be without your input because you elected them. So, you know, there's somewhat of a responsibility incumbent on us all to understand what's proposed. As voters, as citizens of this town, we are the legislative body. So, we all have a responsibility to kind of understand what we're voting for when we vote to change the zoning ordinance. Because this board recommends changes. We draft them. We say, "This can work if the town approves it." But we, you know, this is direct democracy in its most basic form. Each one of us is the legislative body of this town when we come together to vote at town meeting. You know, there's a responsibility that comes with that. You know, I think we've done a good amount. I think we've done as much as a volunteer board can do. We've enlisted a consultant that had several public outreach meetings. You know, this was one of the...this is the culmination, or this proposal was one of the recommendations of that process. And, you know, I almost feel like it would be disingenuous for us to notice the public and say, "Hey, we're going to...we're considering this." You know, "We're going to have a hearing on it." And then not give it to the voters and say, "We're going to do it next year." I'd almost rather say, "Let's put it to the voters, see what they say. And if they don't approve it, then maybe we can say, 'Are there elements of this that you liked? Can we tweak it? Or should we not look at this again for next year? Is it going to be soundly defeated in a way that it's not worth talking about next year?'" You know, we've done a lot. It's almost like wadding this up and then throwing it in the trash can to say, "We're not going to vote on it this year." You know, the... What's that?
I think that's all said. Thank you.
I do agree with Rebecca in that it is very complicated for people to understand and especially to read that, the lack of understanding. I also think this is a situation, just like any big project that you're trying to present. You always present it, you hope that people want it. And if it...it usually will go off till the next year because you just have to explain some more. They...it's all okay until it's not and they realize what's going to happen. So, whether it's put off another year or we let the voters, I think it's still going to be very unclear a year from now with a lot of people.
Let's keep the public hearing open for a few more moments. Would you like to speak? Yeah, please.
Thank you. I've been waiting to hear from other people.
My name is April Tashima. I live on Crescent Street. And I'm not opposed to the...to what you're saying. I'm taking advantage of the over-55 community. It's great. Really love it. And thank you. But hearing the talk, so presumably, there will be young families moving into some of these homes that...
Maybe.
Will probably be built. And I'm just...I just want to point out that Fairgrounds Road is a really busy road. And I was wondering if there's any discussion about building sidewalks. Because I think there might be more...
There's always discussion about building sidewalks, but...
Just for safety purposes.
There are no current, like, active discussions about putting sidewalks on Fairgrounds Road. And interestingly, it is a pretty, like, well-traversed road on foot. You see lots of people walking on Fairgrounds Road.
Yeah.
And cycling as well. And there are definitely concerns about, like, pedestrian other access there because it is a popular road with multiple means of transport going down there all the time. But there are currently no plans to put sidewalks in there. There has been a proposal to put sidewalks from downtown to Fairgrounds Road, which is not going anywhere at this very second, but that has been talked about. Which maybe down the road could lead to even more, but all of that is stalled at this point. So, the easy answer is no. There is a bit of a more complicated answer.
The planning process can, you know, if someone were to bring us a proposal to put in, you know, 200 single-family homes on the old Fairground, you know, that might be something where we'd say, "Hey, you know, this warrants offsite improvements and we're going to ask you to put sidewalks along the entirety of Fairgrounds Road."
Although, it must be noted there that if that happens, that's also... You're probably not going to ask them to pay for the plowing as well. So, there's a whole...not the conversation has to happen there.
Right, right. I mean, you know, my point is that, you know, a development, you know, a new development, we could require that they put sidewalks within their development. But if it's substantially large, I mean, the planning process can say, "Hey, this is going to..." You know, connectivity is important and there might be a requirement for offsite improvements. You know, typically, there has to be more work done, but it's not out of the realm of possibilities.
As far as infrastructure, there's no light from Fairgrounds Road to the bridge and beyond. There's just no lights. I was going by last winter, there was a woman on the snowbank because she lost her grip. And she was just laying and cars just drove right by because they couldn't see her. I finally stopped and...but there's...it's just not the infrastructure, it's just not there yet.
And the sewer, I guess the sewer is there, but the sewer district really doesn't have a lot of capacity for all of this access. And then you've got to think about the school system, so it's just a lot.
I think when we've talked to the Jason from the water and sewer, he said there's like, double capacity almost everywhere right now.
That's what I'm understanding too, yeah.
It's...I think when they built it, they overbuilt it. And my understanding is there's a lot of capacity almost everywhere.
They overbuilt and expected much more development on Tenney Mountain as well.
Sorry.
So, how do we feel at this point?
Well, I don't want to jump to conclusions here, but I kind of feel like I would like to still move this to the voters with the effort, you know, with the understanding that we're going to continue to do outreach and answer questions. Not that we're going to advocate for it, but just explain that what the impacts would be and, you know, allow the voters to choose.
I agree. And here it is, and those that would like to see it go off a year can...
If it goes down, it goes down. That's okay.
Will reach out to people and explain that.
Yeah, you know, I think that our intent is, we've received a lot of input that said, "Houses are expensive. It's hard to develop land. We'd like to see some options to make more affordable development options so that young families, you know, working families can afford..."
Everybody. There's affordable housing. Housing that people can afford.
It is a statewide issue. I think the state has identified that we're currently 40,000 units short statewide in the next 20 years. It's supposed to be like 90,000 units or something like that. I mean, there is a statewide shortage and I still blame the state's education funding for that, but...
Another...
Yeah, but we don't have to be, you know, bucking the standard. We are going to be working on the overlay, is it for the Tenney Mountain area as well next year?
Yes.
We're going to be working on that as well.
And I think if we don't put this forward, I think we're going to be behind eight ball on that one because we won't know what people feel, if this concept of an overlay is going to fly or not.
It's a conceptual part of it.
I mean, if we move forward with this and it goes forward, then people will say, "Yeah, we looked at this last year for an overlay and it went through and we like how it's working out." You know, I think if we want to do...if we don't do this this year and do it next year and have another one for Tenney, they're going to say, "This is...what's with all these overlays all at once?" You know, that's the other side of the coin.
I don't know.
I'm going to move that we present Amendment Eight for the Fairgrounds Road Overlay District to the voters.
I'll second that.
And...
Oh, I know, actually, it is currently 7:35. I'm going to close the public hearing. Is there any further discussion from the board? All right. All in favor of moving this amendment to the ballot? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Three-three, it doesn't pass.
Yeah.
Next item.
Okay.
Okay.
That was exciting.
All right, so it does not move forward then?
That's okay.
Not going to...just to clarify, so I didn't say anything. All right. So, before we move forward to the OSRD, while we're talking about amendments, I'm going to propose that we take our March work session, which is March 7th, I believe. Written down somewhere here, March 7th. And use that for a kind of community Q and A where we can do some...give out some information and take questions and hear from people.
Where?
We can look into that, like, if we do it here or somewhere else.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We can talk about the location, I think, but...
Do we want to see if the school is available and have it back in the cafeteria?
We could.
Where those sessions were?
Do whatever we used to do.
Would that work for you, Joseph, if we reached out to the...
See if it was available.
Does that sound good to everyone?
I like the concept of having all the amendments out and so people can ask questions about it. Yeah.
So, let's mark it on our calendars then. We'll do a Q and A session on March 7th, the week before.
And the location to be determined.
Location to be determined.
Would that be at your regular meeting time?
That would be at our regular meeting time, I think, 6:30. That sounds good, yeah? Okay.
So, it will be a regular work meeting of the planning board, but not here?
And if we have to fall back to here, we can. But we could probably...I mean, I don't know how many people are going to show up, but...
So, how...I mean, my question is, what are we going to do to get people here? And so, if it's just a regular, you know, PBTV and stuff like that, I don't see any reason for us to hold it elsewhere.
Yeah.
I feel like we'd have to do something to get people to come to it.
I still like the sandwich board idea where we do the town common concert notice.
Yeah.
Couldn't hurt if we can get it out there.
Oh, out here?
Right up the...
Maybe if we put something... Something that says, "Big change coming. Come to the planning board meeting."
Yeah, there you go. Draw some real raw pictures or something that'll get their attention.
We could go with a...maybe we could get Vermin Supreme and say, "Free ponies for everybody."
So, it's getting late already. And I do want to...
He's the guy who runs for president wearing a boot.
I would like to talk about the OSRD. And so, assuming that passes, the OSRD will be removed in like, a month and a half now from our zoning ordinance. And it will not be anywhere unless we adopt something into our subdivision regulations. Thank you. And so, it didn't come in a packet, but also over here, if you are looking for one, there's a copy of our old OSRD as well as the proposed language here. And I'll just say a few words to kind of get us going here. So, the old OSRD, Open Space Residential Development, language, I would say, you know, in various places lacks some clarity and specificity. And there are various kind of shortcomings in it. It also includes things we might be interested in talking about, like density bonuses. There are things in it like, all the uses on the underlying zone look like they're included in the OSRD language, which would be a bit much in some ways. Not that anybody's used it that way. And then, so we have this new language that we can look at here and go through. And I went through a quick checklist last time, the end of last meeting, when we didn't have the time to look at it in more depth. I think Peter asked me to kind of go through my checklist just to get some ideas. Yeah, so I do have a list of questions and things I'd like to talk about with that, but I also want to give everybody else a chance to talk. So, hopefully, you've all had a chance to look at this language and write the comment on it. But... Does anybody want me to go through some of my checklist?
I think you should.
I have a quick question. I have the 2002 subdivision regulations.
Okay.
Those are the most recent ones, right? Okay. I know we did the...yeah, that's what I thought. I just wanted to double-check that. I...when we do present this, I will have something that I would like to see also part of the subdivision. A minor change that we're... a minor change that we're, we need to put in there.
Okay. No, so like, yeah, I, and I will, I will say right up front, there's other stuff in our subdivision regulations, a good amount of other stuff that could use some updating. And I think for now.
There's a lot that needs to be updated in there. There's one thing that we, that we have been told by counsel because of a court case that we should put in our subdivision regulations.
Got it, got it, got it. So this time around, we can make that one change perhaps, as well as the OSRD. And I certainly think going forward, there's lots of other stuff that can also be updated.
Yeah, in the event that it takes another twenty years to to get to it, like, let's put this one change in that we were requested to do after, after extensive court situation.
Yes. So I'm just going to go through here then. Joseph mentioned, and he makes a good point about some of the terminology in here not quite lining up with the zoning ordinance and just kind of aligning those better could be interesting to do. I know Joseph also has some questions about slope issues, which I'll let him describe if he likes to in a moment. I think an easy fix that we just have to make probably is four stories mentioned in the OSRD here.
Yeah.
And as I mentioned at our last meeting, there could be four very short stories. We have thirty-five feet in our zoning ordinance, which takes precedent.
Yeah, that's my mistake.
And.
So that's not supposed to be in there?
No, it's my mistake.
Okay.
Can I just say one thing before you go into all this?
Yeah.
Almost everything in here is policy. So just so you know where we were coming from, where I was coming from, in July or August, I gave you all a copy of Dover's, oh, sorry, just so you get a sense of what you can do with subdivision regulations. The fact is, you've got a lot of wiggle room in here and you just need to tell us what you want this to do. I try, I mean, I, this isn't a perfect clone of Dover, but there's a lot of the Dover influence in here. Usually when I work with a planning board, people want to sort of get maximum quality out of a project in exchange for the flexibility to do something different. I don't know if that's where your heads are. That's just usually my experience. So you just need to tell me what you want.
So I should, I should say upfront before I go through like my checklist here, that overall, I see this as a real improvement and I like a lot of what I see. And personally at least. And so liking a lot of what I see, I also see some issues that I'd like, I have questions about or concerns.
Totally fine.
And so the fact that I'm going to list off a bunch of like negative things does not mean I don't like overall what I see and I think that's worth saying. Let's see. There's a mandate for OSRD in the Ag for major subdivisions, which there are a couple of reasons to question that, which we can talk about. In our old subdivision, in our old OSRD, there are density bonuses for various things and I think that's worth considering. I think that's also kind of, actually, no. I was going to say the density bonuses would also be interesting to consider in relation to the overlay, which we're not putting through this year, because it would yield you about the same density and it wouldn't yield you more than the overlay already gives you in that area. But that's kind of a moot point, right, at this moment at least. Some of the buffers and setbacks seem a bit large for me at least. The others disagree.
I guess I.
One, one, one last thing I would mention. What kinds of residential uses are listed in here that are allowed? I wouldn't mind seeing allowing all residential uses that are already allowed in the underlying zone as an alternative. Whatever that might be in that zone does allow the same uses in the OSRD. If it was up to me, others, again, might disagree. Those are some of the things that I noticed, but again, I think this is a real has, I like most of what I see here. Yeah?
I would be curious because I did look at the setbacks and they are bigger than what we have and I'm just wondering if there's a reason in a open space residential development where you'd want to have bigger, or if there, what's the reasoning behind that?
I would reduce them. But every messaging I've gotten in this town for months has been, we don't want to see it. So I made them generous, but you can tell me what you want and.
Before you go, Mike, one thing worth noting that there's the setbacks and then there's separately the buffer.
Yes, right.
And I think the setbacks, I think, should, in my opinion, definitely be smaller.
You can, you can have no setbacks if you want. Well, I mean, especially if you're going to have attached single family.
Yeah. The buffer, on the other hand, is an interesting issue. I see places where a buffer would be totally appropriate and it would be in fitting with the character of certain places where you might put this. And I see a buffer in other places being completely not necessary and maybe even counterproductive. And and there is language in here that says that could be waived by the board. I might want to see that a little bit more upfront, but so anybody reading this said, oh, yeah, it's right there, but it is in, the language is in there. And yeah, I appreciate that.
The distance between units, I want to specifically address that.
Yeah.
Because you could do multiple dwellings on a single lot in a project like this, you have to take into account whatever the code is on separation, the fire code. So, I mean, this is probably something that you might want to take up with the fire chief, like what would the fire chief require? But that's why, that's a different measure than setback to the lot line, so, you know.
Building separation.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. So.
So they can get firefighting equipment in between buildings safely.
Yeah, they need to be able to access structures from at least three sides. And so I'm just saying that I would just, Joseph, maybe even talk to the fire chief about the minimum separation and go with what the fire chief says. That would be my recommendation.
Then you can put a note in there so then twenty years from now, we're like, why did we say this?
Right.
We're not still puzzling over the thirty-five feet.
Do we address, I noticed we discuss a yield plan. Do we discuss standards for the development of the yield plan in terms of, you know, can they, can they just take a fifty acre parcel that's in a two acre loan and zoning and say there's twenty-five lots? Or do we make them calculate areas exclusive of wetlands?
I can write that in here if you want.
So, I mean, it's a question for us. I mean, I guess, I guess the question is, does, do we address the standards for a yield plan?
I haven't, but I can. Typically, what it is, is you're allowed to use existing data and you would have a, an automatic sort of percentage reduction for, like, say.
Wetland or.
Yeah, they're like assumption about wetlands and then you have an assumption about roads, you know, fifteen percent or whatever. And that comes out, that's all out. So then you end up with the development, developable area. You're trying to sort of mimic what's the analysis somebody would have to do to do a standard subdivision.
Right.
What about steep slopes? Do they get thrown in there ever?
Well, do we have that in zoning or?
No.
Current OSRD has you put together a conceptual subdivision right to determine your yield. So it would be a different, different format of, you know, different way to get to that number, potentially less cost.
That was, that was a controversial thing. Like the, the last town I lived in was hilly and wet and we had, you know, we had prohibitions in our general subdivisions about steep slopes, you know, minimum lot sizes could be, were exclusive of steep slopes and wet areas.
So that's already in the subdivision, that's already in the subdivision regulations, right?
Uh, is it?
I'm asking because I don't have, I don't have, I just have the OSRD open right now. I'll control F on this ancient thing.
I don't think, I don't think we've had anything more than a minor subdivision in my time on this floor.
Well, slope, we don't have a slope overlay or anything like that that prevents development of the slope. And our lot sizing is not a, you know, using a soil based formula, so unless there's, you know, I don't, I can't think of a reason.
If we don't do that now, I'm not suggesting we make it more complicated. I just wanted us to have that discussion. If we're, if we're talking about making a change and adding this, let's all be on the same page.
I do like the idea of having a little more information or the criteria for the yield plan because I read that. I don't even, I didn't know what, I mean, I could guess what that is, but giving more guidance partly for the applicant, but also for the board to be able to understand what they're looking at when they, when they receive this.
That's totally fine.
One thing that, as far as slopes and soils, it's always been out there so that you don't put as many houses on areas with steep slopes. Am I correct? You wanted to minimize the amount of houses that go up onto like Plymouth Mountain and that type of thing. Am I right? That was the intent?
I mean, it's impervious surface. It's construction, it's the existence of these buildings and the access to get to them. So some towns will limit slope on driveways, in particular sometimes driveways in commercial areas as opposed to residential, so.
I almost think. Part of it too is that, you know, you don't, if somebody has like a, you know, five lots on the side of a hill and they're all two acres, but they're all like straight up and you can't, like, what, what good is that? You're not really protecting the public interest by allowing them to be created in that manner.
Sometimes it's view shed protection too.
And I always, I always flip the coin on that a little bit because we've got some great soils in Plymouth and then we've got the uplands. And it almost seems like you're forcing the development to go on this beautiful soil rather than the uplands that can't be used for anything else. Put the houses up there and.
One way to get a lot more soil on those, those lower areas. One way to get a lot more soil on those lower areas.
So it's just something to think about. I've always never been a one hundred percent advocate of slopes and soils to minimize housing. I just think that's where it needs to go, especially in light of what we've been talking about the last two years.
Agricultural land should be preserved and for agriculture.
I agree with that as well.
Just forces it out there and it's not right.
It's also a lot cheaper to develop.
Exactly.
I will need some guidance from the board about what you want to say.
Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
So currently, we don't really have a whole lot of OSRDs in Plymouth and.
I'm not surprised. It's pretty horrible bylaw.
I don't know if it's because of our poorly written bylaw or for other reasons, but this brings up the question of whether the enticement of density bonuses, like we currently have in our poorly written bylaws, would be helpful here to encourage public access or other things like that.
Well, especially if you're going to make the whole thing voluntary, because I understand you don't want to require it in the Ag Zone. If you're going to make it all voluntary, you really need to put a density bonus in here, which we've kind of accounted for in the footnote to the dimensional tables, that amendment. So sure, we could do that.
Even without a density bonus, there still is an advantage in that you might have less road construction costs, less site development costs, but I, I agree.
A lot of developers don't understand.
Well, so.
Is there not a density bonus in here?
So, yeah, there's not, there is a density bonus in the currently adopted standards and there is not in the draft.
You can have the same number of units as you would otherwise have in that plot of land.
I would be more than happy to factor in some kind of density bonus.
Am I looking at a?
There's nothing called a density bonus, but it's not actually.
It's not actually a density bonus. There is a heading there, a number.
Sort of is because you're providing for the possibility of including.
So I do see a word on there, a phrase that says density bonus, but we're talking about something different. Okay.
Yes.
In light of the discussion that just took place in here, I need direction from you about what is going to be a palatable density bonus.
Okay.
Because I'm not going to make it up.
So the, I'll just, for background on what the current is, they're stackable up to a hundred percent density bonus, which is actually quite a lot.
That's substantial.
But you can have density bonus for perpetual protection of the open space up to a hundred percent. So that's a two percent per percent of the lot that you protect perpetually. So protect twenty-five percent, fifty percent density bonus. There's a ten percent public access bonus, a twenty percent agricultural land bonus, and an additional protection bonus for historical buildings, flora and fauna, waterfalls, et cetera. That's ten percent.
And just to clarify one thing before we go on, the rewritten, the rewritten OSRD here, I think mandates in perpetuity.
Yeah.
That would no longer be a bonus if we go with it.
Why is that a bonus, density bonus? That should be mandated for open space.
Can, can you just, I have a hard time with hearing numbers and understanding what it means. Could you say like a ten percent density bonus? Could someone translate that into like what that would look like?
Eleven houses instead of ten.
You put your yield plan together though and whatever you could do under.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, no, this is, this is helpful. It's like, I realize it's a silly question. I just can't.
No, it's not a silly question. It's a very good question.
In the current.
If you have, yeah, a ten acre lot with one acre lot sizes, you can put eleven.
But he's also talking about different percentages depending on which zone you're in too. So that confused the, quite a bit.
Yeah.
I have a question about this land and pepper.
Perpetuity.
It's been a long day.
Well, I mean, if you're going to, if you're going to give somebody a, if it's an open space development and you're allowing them to increase density in one part, the goal is you're not going to develop that other part. That has to be, like, otherwise you might as well just let them keep doing smaller subdivisions.
Was that your question, Mike? You get to actually ask it?
Kinda.
You're, you're creating a development right that includes that land. That you're transferring, if you will, the development right of the property you're saving to the rest of the site. So otherwise, you're end up, you end up creating the very density bonus that I think people are worried about, so.
So we don't know, perpetuity is a very long time.
It's in perpetuity or the maximum period of law by law.
Yeah, so it's a very long time. And who knows in two, three hundred years whether we're going to be living ten high because there's no land. We don't know and all of a sudden there's this ten acres and it's Mad Max and who knows?
Yes.
You can't touch that land.
If I, if I can respond to this.
Forever is a long time.
Forever is a very long time. And I also get nervous about forever, very much so. And I actually did do some reading up on this. And there is a procedure in place to break this if, if need be for very specific reasons. The bar is high as it should be because it shouldn't be easy to break this.
The town or the?
The Attorney General of the state, right?
I forgot. But it's.
If you're talking conservation.
It's, it's, yeah. It's possible to break these. You have to have a really good reason and a really arduous process as it should be because it shouldn't be easy. But if unforeseen circumstances arise that make it important to change this, that forever can actually mean not quite forever.
Right. And the state and the federal government always has, has the right to take it no matter what for roads and that type of thing. I always think about all these, the people that put their land into conservation easement and can have for a hundred acres and they keep two out for their kids and, you know, that's forever. And I know that there's offices in Washington in basements where they're working on this now to break these in the future. I know they've talked about that there's offices. And so I just always wonder because as zoning changes and you made, you, you, you did your deal for four per acre and then in a hundred years, the zoning is now thirty per acre or whatever, that kind of, there's some land there.
Or thank goodness, we still have some open space in this town.
And that too, right.
And that's why it's there. And I would say that there's no way we can do this without putting it in perpetuity because, you know, that, that to me is the whole point of, you know, encouraging more density in certain areas while maintaining more open space instead of having single, I'm going to just rant for a second. Instead of having, you know, a bunch of single family homes on single acres, you get a lot more open space, a lot more contiguous open space. It's a much, much more higher conservation value and maintain some of the, you know, the remaining ecological integrity that we have.
And maybe, and, and in a hundred years, when Plymouth looks like Manchester, we'll still have all this nice park space.
Yeah.
I, I see.
I say that like in a little bit.
I see these open space developments as kind of like stepping aside nature preserves in each subdivision.
Manchester.
Which is good. When all the land around it is developed, you'll love having that five acres that was part of a conservation.
If you have a provision to break from here, you actually make it easier here than some other states.
Really?
Yeah.
But I, I agree one hundred percent, John. I know that there's, there's procedures out there and I'm sure. And you need them. Not forever. It can't be.
So I, I feel similarly uncomfortable about that and at the same time, I think it's really important to, for the whole logic of this to, to happen.
Now, who takes care of the, of this common land?
That's.
That's, yeah. And that is some of my, just chatting about the, that and who, how that's going to happen and where it happens procedurally.
There's more than one way for it to happen.
Yeah.
Whether it be a conservation easement or some other agreement that is made, but in some way it has to be legally binding and perpetu- but in some way it has to be legally binding and perpetuity agreement.
Generally, the conservation easement has to be held by a third party who has enforcement rights over that development.
It's like holding any other restriction.
Yeah.
The town could hold it.
Well, it's generally better for the town not to hold it, but like, it's better for a third party, like, an independent nonprofit land trust to do it.
I mean, Plymouth holds a handful of conservation easements.
It's a responsibility, it's-
It is a responsibility.
It's an encumbrance on the town to enforce those then, which, we're, I mean, honestly, I'm not, if you don't have a select board who's supportive of enforcement, then they're no good.
No, I, and I do agree with that, I do think it-
Whereas, whereas a land trust, that all they do is manage those conservation easements, like, that's what they do. They say, hey, you're not supposed to be-
And it becomes a non-taxable piece once it does that.
No, the taxes are still, generally the taxes are still assessed to the development now, like, they, they get as, they go as a share to the-
It'd be like an HOA.
The 11 homes, each get an 11th of that share of taxes on it.
So it would be probably good to be as specific as possible in some of the directives we offer this evening. Within reason, given it's our first discussion, but, so we can kind of start to move forward on this.
Do we, do we address the requirement for covenants to be filed when, when somebody does something like this that defines how the shared spaces to be treated and paid for?
Is that already in your subdivision? I'm sorry, if I, I shouldn't know, but I don't.
I don't either.
Yeah, we don't have anything in our subdivision regulations, really, that gets much into detail on that. I think there's something in the draft about, you know, the open space.
Seems to me that, given our energy put into road maintenance issues in the past year, that that's something that we should be considering. It's like, if there's a private road, there should be covenants in place to define who's responsible for the maintenance of the road until such time as it's taken over by the town. You know, that type of thing should be recorded, and everybody should be recorded on the deeds of everyone buying property in that development, so that nobody can say, I didn't know this was a private road, or I didn't know I was responsible for a share of the maintenance on this private road. You know, typically, when you do a subdivision with a private road, that's, you kind of have to deal with that. And there's a, you know, covenants set that expectation and legal documentation for how to do that.
I will say that with a lot of subdivisions that are going on now, we're running into it, and two of them is, the boards are actually asking you, you have to, in the deed, you come up with an HOA, and the owner, whoever's doing the subdivision, is responsible for the lots, and as they sell, this HOA is, so people do that until the town. So that's actually something that most towns are really demanding.
And if we don't do that now, we should.
I'd like to go back one step. As far as the land set aside and the third party holding it and being in control of it, I worry about the fragmentation of the town. And I was in a planned unit development where there were 22 acres and 20 cottages, and at any one time, there are, in the documents, a way to dissolve that association, where they could sell the 22 acres, everybody gets their cut of the 20 acres, 20 owners, and then that land then can be used for whatever else, new purpose. But if it's sold off to a third party, if we force that and not just let the association handle that acreage, then they could sell the whole thing and it can be a different purpose. And manufactured housing comes down, or the trailers, or the single-family homes in 50 years, 100 years, and it all becomes a different purpose, without trying to then go back to a third party to bring it back in. And so you just fragment the town all over, I, I just get concerned about that.
You're talking about the conservation easement on a piece of property? That a third party might not even own the parcel, they might just hold a conservation easement on it.
That's, I'm also-
Yeah.
I'm worried about that.
Why?
It fragments the land and it-
The land is one entire parcel with a conservation easement held on the, the part that is allowing for more density.
And if, if that lot that had six homes on it and had, they got the density bonus, and then they had to leave six acres off, but then at some point, those six people in the HOA decide to each sell the whole thing, they all go their separate ways, now you've got this 12 acre lot, it may be that whatever goes on, goes on the back part.
You can't put anything on the back, because there's a conservation easement on it.
Right, that's what I'm saying. I don't see-
If, if a single person bought all six homes and voluntarily merged them, they could dissolve it, but they would have to have six individual families willing to sell those homes.
Yes. Could they get, but they, I don't think they can get rid of that conservation easement.
That's unscrambling the egg. It's very unlikely.
Right, but there's no need to sell the conservation easement if those six homeowners just continue-
So the conservation easement is not something you sell, it's simply an enforcement mechanism on public. So it, it's meant to protect the public interest on, on the value of that land, on the, on the open space. It's not, it can't be resold, it's still owned by the development and the HOA.
It's owned and fee by one entity and the restriction is held by another.
Right.
Right. So if it's held, that they get their permission for the six units, that six acres, let's say, stays empty, they can't do anything more anyway. They've already, you've already said what they can do, they've reached the limit. But at some point, the zoning changes in the community, they want to sell, and now it's a different zone and different-
Dimensional requirements.
Dimensional requirements. Now, if they sell, it might be worth some more money, and if it's fragmented, they're limited in what they can do in that fragment, maybe there's-
It's not fragmented, it's, it's, I mean, it's an intact conservation easement to, actually to prevent fragmentation. It's, the, the whole point is to say, let's put more density here by, and protect other, another space.
So, so, oh, sorry. No, what I was going to say is oftentimes, there's a, there's a, sometimes when you subdivide, you might say, you know, no further subdivision of lots in this development will be allowed. And that's like, that's a deed restriction, it's legally enforceable.
Yes.
So that's, that's off, that would, that would happen with that open space as well. No further subdivision of this parcel, and, and, and that is enforced by the conservation easement.
And I don't see the need for the conservation easement. If they're already limited on what they can develop and they've done it, they can't go back for another pass.
But in theory, you could, like-
Yes, you could, and that's what I'm talking about.
And that's the whole point, like, this board could approve a subdivision by conservation easement, and if somebody says, I'm going to come to that same board next year with that lot for a conservation easement with a subdivision proposal, like, if we want to put blinders on and say, oh, we don't remember doing this, subdividing these lots off, we could grant that subdivision, and we would be in violation of our own subdivision regulations.
But if that development ceased, if that development ceased, that's what I'm saying.
Can I make a recommendation?
Developments are perpetual, like, that's the whole point of development. It's not like it's a for-profit entity, it's, it's, these are, these are restrictions that run with the land in perpetuity.
Can I, can I make a recommendation? For, for now at least, I think it might be beneficial to kind of keep the broader kind of discussion of these bigger issues aside, and maybe this, at least for the time being, assume that, that some of these best practices can be kind of moved forward with, and if we want to question them at some point along this process, we can. But it might be, it might be really helpful at this point to get some concrete recommendations to Judy that she can work with to make some recommendations, changes here and give us another draft before the night's out. And I think some of these bigger kind of philosophical questions can be left for another discussion, so we can get some concrete ideas to Judy.
Yeah, I think it's nice to flush out a little bit and then go deeper another day.
It's hard for me to know, like, even what, what kind of input we need to do here.
Like, for example, so are we comfortable with the idea of giving density bonuses?
Yes, I am, I'm happy.
Okay, and how, and to what extent?
To the extent that we have permanent conservation easements on-
I would like, I would like to-
Let's do it as a percentage.
I would like to say an upper limit, like, I would say if we're going to prevent, present options for, you know, you can get a 10% bonus for this, a 10% bonus for this, a 10% bonus for this, I would say a maximum of 20% density bonus in any given open space development, regardless of how many combinations they use. Like, I don't think we should be going with 100% density bonus.
Yeah, I think you're right.
I could go to 40.
So keep in mind, we already made, we're already changing the minimum lot sizes in zoning, like-
Oh, yeah.
Right, we're already adding significant density with the proposed zoning changes.
In some zones, more than others.
We could make the zones specific. I mean, honestly, if we did a 20% in the ag zone.
I'd rather just have it be simple, though, I mean, honestly.
I mean, but it's just, it's, to me, that's like, that's not much of a density bonus there, right?
It depends on how big the parcel is.
And I feel like encouraging more density in a smaller area, in particular in the ag zone, could be important, because we could potentially have an agricultural conservation easement that protects, permanently protects, you know.
And in fact, if you can make the ag, like, density bonus, like, a really big one, to really encourage that.
It's currently 20%, the current agricultural protection bonus.
I don't think I've ever seen it higher than 50%. Just for whatever it's worth.
The total bonus.
Except in, except in our cluster development and the-
Yeah, well, just talking about best practices.
I don't think we're in a position tonight to come up with a percentage. I think just talking about it is good.
So we'd like to see one, the consensus about that, though?
See one, I think the numbers-
For, maybe for agriculture, for making it more publicly available to people outside of the development?
Yeah, public access is good.
Preserving, yeah, agricultural soils. Those are publicly available information.
Well, quality open space is usually a consideration, just saying.
I think, yeah.
If you're worried about fragmentation, you ought to be worried about fragmenting open space.
Yeah.
You have some pretty significant wildlife in this town, and it would not be irresponsible to consider.
Interconnected wildlife pathways, is that something we want to value? Like, sometimes you talk about-
Actually, we have, in our master plan, we have wildlife corridors, I think, noted, I think, is that right?
I mean, that, that could be a benefit.
It could be a, you know, highly valuable wildlife habitat. That's readily available information.
Isolated habitat is one thing, pathways from habitat to habitat is another, and if you have something between-
Connectivity. It's connectivity.
Yep.
We do have a bonus, one of the current bonuses is for linking open space parcels or trail corridors through the site, which is kind of similar, but a little bit different.
Yeah, so I think we're, thumbs up on density bonuses, like, some of the things we've heard. Let's see, what else could be clarified? I, I'm personally interested in allowing all residential uses in the underlying zone. Okay.
All permitted uses?
Yes, in the underlying zone, yeah.
Permitted or?
Well, permitted residential uses, not all permitted uses, which we currently have, which is like everything.
Talking about permitted residential uses, not special exception, not whatever.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Residential uses. Permitted as a right.
Yeah.
And that would allow manufactured housing, which one of the two, it is notable that one of the two OSRDs that we have is manufactured housing.
Yeah. And it seems to be very popular, as we found tonight.
So it's, it would be any permitted residential use in the district in which the OSRD is occurring, because this is not an overlay.
Yeah, yeah.
Keeps it simple.
And, and gives a little bit more flexibility in certain places. So currently, in, in the current language here, in the ag zone for any major subdivision, it would have to be an OSRD.
Say that again?
Somewhere in here.
It's under general requirements.
Any major subdivision in the ag zone shall be required to adhere to the-
Totally up to you guys.
And I, I just wonder what the appetite is on that. I understand the benefit of that, I mean, obviously, it's a great benefit. And there are two related, two questions, whether we want that, because a major subdivision is a pretty low bar, as opposed to like giving a minimum acreage or something. And the other question is, like, Joseph and I have talked about that, like, would that actually need to be in the zoning ordinance to require something like that or not?
What, that it, that an OSRD would be required?
That it would be required for a subdivision.
Major subdivision.
It's a, it's a land use.
I have not seen that.
No, it wouldn't need to be in there?
Because it is one use in our table of uses, among other uses. And we don't regulate uses right now based on the, you know, the number of lots in a subdivision.
So we would require any major subdivision to adhere to the OSRD?
No, the OSRD to adhere to-
To any major, okay.
So that was a suggestion. You do not have to say that. You could simply say that an OSRD is available for any project that's a major subdivision.
I mean, I, I like, in principle, I like that idea, because in the ag zone, it would preserve more open space and make that mandatory.
No.
At the same time, I, I could understand there being pushback and what?
I guess I don't understand the conversation at this point.
I'm confused here.
Somewhere, so what page is it?
So it's right on the first page.
It just says if you're going to do a cluster development, that you would have to go as a major subdivision.
No, it says any major subdivision must follow these procedures here, which is OSRD.
I didn't, I didn't take it. Are we talking B1?
You've already got a definition.
C1A, C1A, bottom of the first page.
You've already got a definition in your subdivision regulations of a major subdivision. All this is saying is, if it, if it's that, then you would have to do this. You don't have to say that. You can make the whole thing voluntary, it's entirely up to you.
I like it in principle, I don't know if it's going to be pushback. But if it's not, I'm, I'm game.
I mean, the reason that a town might do this is because you've got an area with larger properties, and the goal is to try to preserve as much of that land as possible. If that is not Plymouth's culture, then let it go.
Yeah, that would never go.
Well, it, it only has to go through us with public input. So it's not, this is not going to town meeting, to be clear.
And I, I want to be respectful of that. If people don't want this, it, you know, bear, bear in mind, I gave you guys the Dover draft, Dover actual, months ago. And I never really got any comments back on it. So I started with the philosophy of, when you have larger lot properties, you would want to encourage, you would want to require the preservation of open space unless somebody can get a waiver. If that is not the culture of Plymouth, then this whole thing can just be, if this is a major subdivision, you may do the following.
So I guess my, my issue there is the bar for a major subdivision is pretty low.
Right.
And I really like this in principle, to, like, preserve open space in the ag zone and even give, like, bonuses for agricultural use of that, open space. And at the same time, I wonder if a better bar, if we even could go with this mandate, would be an acreage bar rather than any major subdivision.
Well, if it's going to be in the subdivision regulations, you have to tie it to-
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, you, you either-
Got it, yeah.
You need to tie it to a major subdivision.
Got it. Otherwise, it wouldn't need to be done.
C1A, say, may, as opposed to shall.
Yeah, I would really like to say that it is this town's culture to make sure that we protect our open spaces.
But?
I'm not going to even say but. I think it's really important, and I think that, you know, in some ways, we do have to lead the charge if this is something that we see, especially in our master plan, as being of value to the town, to protect agricultural lands, to protect forests, to protect hill slope, you know, our sloped hillsides, et cetera.
See, it's kind of hard for me coming in, because you've got a master plan, it's pretty recent. So what do planners do when they go to a community, the first thing you do is read the master plan, which is why I assumed there's already been discussion about Fairgrounds Road, but what do I know? I mean, it's in the master plan, so.
There, there were, there was discussion, but, yeah.
So, anyway, I mean, you can make this voluntary for any project that's a major subdivision. You can just do that.
I, I like, if it, if it's not going to be mandated, like, the enticement to do it.
You need a density bonus.
Yeah, needs to be there.
I was going to say, even if we mandated, there's nothing that says you have to have small lots. I mean, what, you, you could have a, I'm not sure how you would mandate it if somebody wasn't proposing. I mean, you, you could have a subdivision of five acre lots, you know, 10 five acre lots and a 50 lot parcel that-
Yeah, this is just allowing you to.
Right.
But.
Yeah.
It's a taking.
Oh, dear God, no, it is not.
Sure.
It's actually been litigated, but it's up to you, if you want to make it voluntary for a major subdivision, I think it's fine.
I'd just soon keep it out.
Well, you have to give some standard for when it applies. So you might as well just say, if it's a major subdivision, you may follow, you may do the following as an alternative to a standard subdivision, it's just pretty easy.
I think that's what we need to do for now.
Yeah, it's just simple.
It's not what I want, but I think that's what we need to do for now.
And I don't want you to think I'm not for conservation. I'm 100% for conservation, but it's got a, it's been on the backs of the property owners for- And I don't want you to think I'm not for conservation. I'm 100 percent for conservation, but it's got to, it's been on the backs of the property owners for a very long time, and they want to actually see that conserve. But to say, hey, you need to do this, that's something else.
I always have been on the backs of, I don't understand, is there a backstory about this that I don't know?
Not that I know.
They take care of their property.
Yeah.
They leave it open and they could do something with it, but they don't. And it's for everybody to enjoy the views of and from without mandating the view sheds.
Are you talking about?
Open land, forested land?
Yeah.
Unused land, timberland?
Well, here's the thing though, I mean, we're talking about.
Current use.
Regulations and the zoning ordinance.
Yeah.
The whole point of all these regulations and rules is that not everybody is going to follow best practices for the town. And we have to protect the public interest from somebody not following those best interests. And there's a balance there between someone's private rights and the best interest of the town as a whole. And that's what we're talking about here, because sometimes people don't want to do what you're just talking about. And sometimes it is important to force the hand, just to say like, you know, we have to protect the public interest here.
So we've got zoning regulations that they would have to follow. They can't just build 2,000 square foot lots. They have to, on agricultural land, do at least an acre. They have to follow all the rules on roads. There's quite a bit already that is not just suggestions, but you have to follow it in order if you want to develop your land. And what we're, what seems to be proposed is a whole nother layer of potentially asking them to put land off of the side.
But it's, but it's. This is opt-in. Nobody's forcing you.
It's not in addition to, it's instead of. So if, if you have, let's say you take a 100 acre parcel in, in the ag zone, and let's say, you know, you subtract out roads and wetlands and you could get in 71 acre lots. This would allow you to put in 70 half acre lots and put the rest in conservation. So there's no, it's not like it's requiring you to put in more land that you can't develop. It's just saying, rather than developing all the land, we're going to give these smaller homes some parkland to enjoy within their development.
Arguably making your development costs lower.
Right, right.
Probably making the housing more valuable, which is usually what happens. But I think we're beyond this. Aren't we just saying this is going to be voluntary?
Yes.
I mean, if we remove C1A, that is voluntary anyway, in which case, if you don't want to do it, you don't do it.
Right.
Right, it's just if you want to do an alternative.
But it would be really nice to give incentive at least, if we're going to take out the mandate to.
Then I've got that.
So are we all good with the buffers?
I'm okay, yeah.
We can waive it, but it's recommended. And there are certain places where we wouldn't want to see it probably, I would say, and we could waive it then.
Joseph, how many cluster developments do we have in the town right now?
I'm aware of three. And there is the Mountain View Farms, which is the, you know, the prominent one. There's also River Ridge off of Highland Street. And then oddly enough, Martin Estates is a, is a open space residential development, even though it doesn't, it has one acre lots anyway, so.
There's additional undeveloped land there.
Yeah, and it, it was approved as an OSRD. I'm not entirely clear on the history of that one, honestly, but it did get approved under that. I think maybe some of the lots have a little bit less frontage.
Did they get a density bonus at all?
They're all one acre lots, so I don't, I don't know that.
Is that for wastewater purposes?
You know, I'm really not sure. I don't know the history of it terribly well.
There's sewer out there.
Yeah, there's, it's, yeah, it would all be, they're well inseptics, but. Yeah, that's a, that one doesn't really, it has open land and it was approved as an open space residential, but they didn't really cluster very much.
Maybe they waived some of the other dimensional requirements instead.
I know they had to have a cistern in certain areas for sprinkler systems in the buildings, and that was approved. So maybe that's part of why there's that set aside, I'm not sure.
By the way, just so you know, not to digress, but there's a bill in the legislature to forbid communities from requiring more land area for residential development than they need for environmental code purposes.
For environmental?
Yeah, wastewater.
Oh, interesting. Oh, wow.
It's in the legislature.
Whoa.
We, there are a few towns in New Hampshire that require considerably more land per unit than they need in order to have a compliant wastewater system.
So, so they're talking about a house in a 4,000 square foot area and a well?
Giving you information.
Wow.
State does take the housing prices seriously, so.
So are we good with the, there's also the, what is that, C, C4? I, I think, I think this is good, just to run by everyone to make sure.
What page are we looking at?
Page two. Project not meeting the minimum acreage requirements of an OSRD shall follow these additional requirements. So we're asking for a little bit of extra clarification for anyone not meeting the minimum acreage requirements, which makes sense to me.
As defined in number three above, right?
Yeah.
So if you have a four and a half acre in the village commis, village commis, village commercial, you could still do an open space residential if you meet one of those other criteria. Interesting.
I mean, I'm, I'm good with it, I'm just.
Yeah, it's interesting.
Putting it out there so they'll look at.
Yeah, most of my, I didn't realize that this was, what, what type of comments we were looking for, it took much more detail, detailed notice.
You know, if you want to, you know, take a, or another week or so as board members to just think about it. You can always email all your comments to Joseph and Joseph can send them to me, or you can just email me directly. I mean, you guys know how to find me. I don't care either way. I don't want to pressure anybody. I, I mean, I have some stuff I know I can work on now, so, which is fine. There's something else that.
Yeah, I, I'm putting a little bit of pressure on it only because I don't think it's going to be the end of the world. But in terms of timelines, if our zoning amendments go through,
Yeah.
as of mid-March, we will no longer have any OSRD.
Yeah, so we need to, we do need to wrap this up.
It would be good to adopt at least close to there. I mean, I don't think anybody's going to like jump in line like the next day and try to do one, unless they want to be like problematic because they, they see there's not going to be one.
The beauty is, it's your regulations, right? So, you know, if you, we get OSRD regulations in place, and you want to think about it a little more, and there's something that you need to amend, there's a flexibility to do that. I mean, I don't think you want to just have to amend them later, but I'm just saying that the beauty of this is you really can think about, if there's something you want to tweak, you can do it.
And, and in terms of process, I mean, if, if we can give some good feedback tonight, which we started to do already, we can get a better, closer draft to what we want to see.
That's fine.
And look at that again, and then schedule a public hearing. We have to have a public hearing before we actually adopt these. And so there is a several meeting process to make this happen.
I also think that, I mean, if somebody's coming to Joseph and talking about a major subdivision, I feel like there are a lot of benefits to developers in this.
It's the plan.
In the OSRD. And I would imagine Joseph would say, oh, you're planning a, you know, a 10 million unit subdivision, just hang on. You know, we've got the, you know.
Guess what's going. I mean, it's a benefit to the property owner. It's the property owner that's ultimately going to gain, so. But I mean, if you want to keep going tonight, this is fine. Whatever you want to do.
I guess it's just helpful to know exactly like what pieces of, you know, what pieces you need from us.
Policy.
Yeah. And even more specific than that is helpful.
Well, so we're going to talk to, I guess, to.
She's done all she's going to do.
Fire about some of our dimensional questions.
Yeah.
And Joseph, you can follow up on that. Because, yeah, I can definitely see them being smaller.
And I think this, there's a couple of points with that. So there's this table that, you know, you can do a cluster, or you can do individual subdivision lots.
Right.
And there's the table that shows distance around individual units and clusters, and then there's the setbacks within those subdivision lots. So if you're doing those subdivision lots, you're in the two columns on the left, and, or, sorry, if you're in a cluster, so if they're all, you know, like on the same underlying lot, that's a, having a 30-foot building separation is the equivalent of 15 feet on either side of a property line, and, you know, that's, that's something that's worth thinking about. And the other one, the building setbacks on subdivision lots, you know, how, how big are those lots going to be? You know, and how big should those setbacks be? I think, you know, I think that's an important question to a certain extent, because if you are going down to 10,000 square feet or 5,000, I think that's.
I had a question actually about that. So abutting a lot line, I mean, like 50 is a big number for me.
Yeah.
And this is abutting a lot line after subdivision? Or abutting the current lot lines before subdivision?
No, this is, this is the design standards.
So this is like after subdivision? So 50 would be on every lot?
No, that's only, but that's only against off property, off subdivision boundaries, right? Are we talking about the boundaries?
No, it's abutting the lot line. The buffer is different.
Oh, okay. Yeah, I, I thought you were talking about the buffer, sorry.
You can shrink these as much as you're comfortable. I would say at the street, you probably want to think carefully about.
Well, we're still going to have a, for the street within the subdivision is different though than the buffer. That's, yeah.
That's different.
Right. The street within the subdivision, I don't know, do we need 50?
I would say whatever the setbacks are in the, in the underlying zoning.
Inside the development, you can have, you know, do whatever you want, but I think.
It might be less than the underlying development because we are giving density, extra density for the.
So that's the question is, do we want to reduce setbacks if we're increasing density?
But I don't know if it ever does become a town road, they're going to need that brought up to town specs, and they're going to need that pavement a certain width, because the town could take it over.
So the construction of the road, the construction of the road should meet road standards regardless of whether it's cluster or not, as an open space development or not.
Exactly.
And our subdivision requires that.
Yeah.
Yes, and so they're not going to expand the road again later.
Right.
For that reason at least. I mean, if something else happens, that's a whole nother issue, but they shouldn't be taking someone's land in it becoming a public road, because it should already be built to public specs to begin with.
We don't want to make 15 foot wide roads all the way through it, because.
But, but.
The subdivision regs for major subdivisions already require.
Yes, I, I didn't know if John was thinking, hey, we can get a little bit smaller.
No, 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 I was talking, I was saying the opposite.
Oh, okay, good, 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 good.
Yeah.
What's your minimum right-of-way requirement for a subdivision road?
I'll be for, does Joseph want to?
I think it's, I think it's 50 feet, but the planning board can approve minor reductions in, the planning board can approve minor reductions in right-of-way width in, on the advisement of the town engineer.
50 feet.
How it's written.
Are we bringing in patents tanks? I mean, Jesus.
Only to enforce conservation easement stipulations.
Thank you, Rebecca.
You can go against Joe, Joe Fagnett on that, that issue.
That was right.
Oh, good luck with that one.
Yeah, I do. Yeah, I think it's more that we need that right-of-way to control the vegetation, the trees and all that, that if we needed to cut it back so it's not growing into the road, I think that's part of it.
Okay.
That is.
What would you recommend for a road right-of-way width? I'm just curious.
40. For a standard subdivision road, 40 total right-of-way.
Seems reasonable.
That's pretty typical.
24 for travel away?
40, yeah, it's pretty typical. 40 is pretty typical. But, you know, even for some towns actually, I mean, the paved widths can vary quite a bit.
Yeah.
Smaller roads, you probably don't need that much.
And there's.
I know that wide roads tend to encourage higher speeds.
Yes.
And there's also the water and sewer going along the side and.
You're not the only town that has water and sewer.
Oh, we're not?
No, you're not. And you're not the only town with large trucks either.
You can ask Brian how it works with water and sewer in front of the, of the roads.
I just, okay, well, whatever, that's, that's your standard, I'm not.
So I do think.
Yeah, go ahead.
No, I was just going to circle back a little bit to those setbacks on subdivision lots. I do think that, for me, a little bit of clarification is probably helpful, and maybe for the board too with what, so if, if, if we're talking the individual house lots internal to the subdivision, 50 feet subdivision, or 50 foot setback abutting those lot lines for the internal house lots, or 50 feet from the external, I think we were talking about that a little bit, and 50 feet from the internal house lots, that's 100-foot building separation. I don't know, I, I assume that's not, that's referring to what I was a little bit, that's less clear.
That's even very large.
It seems excessive.
It is, so abutting a lot line internal to the development is not the same as the setback to the street, the, the street that you're using to access the development. There typically is a deeper setback at the street, because people get frightened about seeing a house. So typically you have more of a setback at the street.
They might jump out at you.
And then internal to the development, you would have, you know, zero setbacks if you want. It's up to you.
So do you think, I don't know, what if we had a, a diagram? Because there is the minimum buffer, and then there's minimum building setbacks for subdivision lots, abutting a street and abutting a lot.
Can I have a diagram?
Just to clarify, what do these terms mean for anybody reading this?
I have to say, I'm, I have a hard time conceptualizing things, and yeah.
That makes sense.
I'm confused.
So you can show the buffer, you can show the, there's some setbacks and.
Behind you, do some drawing. Show us an example.
Start showing out numbers and abutting and setbacks and, yeah.
You can insert a diagram in here if it would help, I mean.
I don't know if, I mean, we have the, you know, I assume there's this possibility. We don't use diagrams in our subdivision regulations. I imagine that was harder to do at the time.
Diagrams weren't invented in 2002, so.
But I do think it's, which should be, you know, I think.
Diagram would be fine.
We don't, we don't.
I think it would be helpful.
Yeah.
It would be a lot more clear.
Isn't intended to say that 100 feet building separation when they're on individual lots, but I, that was my first read, that's what I thought that meant.
I mean, that's not even required by underlying zoning. I mean, that seems excessive.
All right, so if we can get some clarification from fire, that would be good.
On how much space they need to squeeze.
How much space they actually need.
Yeah.
And then we can talk about whether or not we want to expand upon that, or just leave it up to a developer or not, and.
The current OSRD allows for a reduction in setbacks, but it doesn't say what that is. So Mountain View Farms, just as an example, those were approved at a zero lot line setback on one side and a 20-foot on the other side. So they are, you know, those units are all the way up on the lot line on one side of the lot, and they have a 20-foot on the other side. So they have a 20-foot building separation, which is what the planning board awarded them at the time, but it's pushed to the side, you know, the building is pushed all the way to the side. That's what the board decided to award at that time. There's nothing in zoning saying that that's, you know, why you would award that over something else, but that's what they used at.
And just to clarify also, whatever we put in here is in our subdivision regulations, and if the board so chooses in a particular circumstance, we can waive it, if it makes sense.
Ultimately, we can waive anything in here if we want to.
Exactly, that's what I'm saying. So, I mean, but the thing is.
A flexible way to develop.
Yeah, if a developer comes in and looks at this, they're going to use it as a metric of what they're, they're expecting to do.
Expectations, yeah.
So it's important to have something reasonable there. And then if they have a request for a waiver or whatever, we can always do that.
I mean, the, the way I think about this is if we create standards here and somebody brings us a subdivision that meets 100% of those standards, you kind of have to give it, you have to grant it. Like, but, you know, if somebody's asking you to waive something, that's something that you have the option to do.
But he wants us to look like what we typically expect.
But if somebody brings us an application that's 100% in conformance with our subdivision regulations and we deny it, they're probably going to take us to court and appeal and win. So we have to think about that as being the minimum standard, and, you know, somebody can ask for a variant, or ask for a lesser setback or something.
And it may make sense in the context of that specific development.
Well, that's it, the layout may need that.
Actually, I mean, does, does, I mean, if we have setbacks in, in zoning, I mean, what, what will the zoning say about allowing, do we have the flexibility to reduce setbacks in OS, in OSRD?
Well, we, we have the standard, we have the footnote back in 304, which I don't have open right now. We put a footnote to the dimensional tables, that the dimensions for lot area setback and something else would be subject to Article 9 of the subdivision regulations.
Okay. And that's up to us.
Yeah.
That's what we're, but that's what we're deciding right now.
I mean, you and the applicant get so much flexibility out of this. It's really the way to go.
But if we make it really easy and somebody brings us an application that conforms and we don't like it, we can't say no.
Sure, I mean, that's why you need to be careful about what these standards are. I mean, that's why you need to be careful about what these standards are, but
But we also don't want to make it look like we're asking for something we don't actually want.
Right.
Right.
So
You know, like that's what zoning usually does. Towns are excellent at saying what they don't want.
Yeah.
So, I mean, do you feel like you have some good clarification from us in terms of what we're looking for?
I think so.
And if we have any further input, we can send it to Joseph from the board.
Do you have any other follow-up comments, maybe within the next week?
Mm-hmm.
And then if there's like conflicting comments, Joseph, just bring them back to the board. You don't want us being the arbiter of conflict.
And that four-story in height thing for the buildings will come out?
Yes.
I have a couple like piddly little things that I'll just, I'll send along because they might be more relation, you know, things to talk about here, so.
And like you mentioned, I had a couple of notes about the, the way uses are labeled and the things, uses and things, which I can, I can share that with you.
Yeah, just, if you just put it all in one email, I'm going to treat it like a checklist. And it's just much better than a bunch of, yeah, I just, something's going to get lost.
I don't know.
I think you could have a four-story house in your 70-foot tall E-frame.
Yeah.
All right. On that note.
Can I just ask a question?
There's an exception to every rule.
About the meeting in March, so I
Yes, you may.
Can you guys, you have to answer me tonight, but can you put some thought into what would be helpful to you to have for that meeting?
Okay.
Big signs that say, that we can have outside the polling place. Can we
Yeah, but we're talking about Thursday night, right? Just the information.
Oh, that one, that one, sorry.
Yeah.
We just need time to make some materials, is all.
I mean, I'm guessing that from what we were talking about in the housing committee, that a big goal is to answer questions
Yeah.
And provide clarification for people.
Yeah.
And I don't think we want to give too big of a like spiel from us, maybe a short introduction to the amendments and then just if people have questions, we can wait.
A fact sheet type thing like
I wonder if we should have like a station
Fact sheet would be Is this being proposed or something like that?
Something that can be shared with people who aren't going to come to the meeting.
And some people
I'm thinking, yeah.
Yeah, and people obviously who don't understand zoning.
Yeah, I mean, that would be fine.
A big zoning map that shows
And I think, I mean, I think what needs to get, it needs to be stated in a very clear way that this is not, these are the changes, this is what you can do less of, this is what you can do more of.
Right.
And in break, broken down into very, very simple language.
And, and, and I've got to say for, I think just about every amendment that we're putting forward, there's really not a whole lot of less of.
Ooh, exactly.
And it's a whole lot of more of.
Yep.
Yeah.
Do you have large format maps from the master plan?
No.
That's too bad.
I don't believe so.
No, I don't believe so either.
Have you been in the rack downstairs outside the office?
No, unfortunately. We have some, we, we don't, the town doesn't own a large format printer or scanner, so we don't, we get, if we had anything during that master plan process, you know, I think there might have been one large map that was blown up that was used for some type of engagement activity that's still down there.
We get kind of lost in some staff transitions, both here at Plymouth and at North Country Council who did our master plan, so.
And to our benefit, PSU has also gotten rid of their large format printers.
That's unfortunate.
If we can have a large TV hooked up to a computer, we can just use the town zoning or the, the tax assessor software.
True.
Bring up the zoning layer, move where we want to see it.
Yeah, because you can't even blow up, I mean, the maps that are in the master plan don't, don't scale well.
Unless we could, like you said, get them from the original files.
I mean, I'm happy to reach out to the person who did the maps and see if he happened to have kept them in his
I was thinking the same thing.
And I, I can, I can do that.
I've spoken to Tara about maybe some information from other projects that, and I think there was, I had tried to get a copy of the parking study they did for us in 2017, 18, and there was no copy that anyone there had in their records of any finalized, but Tara had in her personal records, an early draft of it.
Yeah, I, I can reach out to the person who did that too, so, I mean, it's the same person. So I have his personal email, I'll reach out to him and see if he still, if he happened to keep that stuff.
What would be really helpful to us is, can you just, maybe in an email, this is what's going to the ballot, so I'm really clear.
Okay.
Because I've been sick for a while and I don't know what you guys have done while I've been in my deathbed, but I'm not on my deathbed now and I want to make sure I understand what is going to town meetings, so.
Joseph, if you can, I mean, if we had eight amendments and after tonight, seven are going through?
Yep.
Everything but the overlay?
Yeah, that needs to be on file in the office of the town clerk by Tuesday the sixth, so that, what we have will need to be compiled and ready by that time anyway, so, I mean, it's just a matter of taking out the one that didn't pass from the list.
Yeah.
So that's, should be easy enough to just send over and it'll be on the website and in the town clerk's office, but I'll get that in.
I just want to make sure if we work on a few kind of handouts that they're accurate, it would not be good if they weren't.
So I'm going to ask, is there any other unfinished business from board members or planning staff?
Two things. One is, this is actually a question, Joseph, Judy, you might have the answer to this. A municipal project in a town that, you know, if it was a, if it was a private project might trigger a development of regional impact, do towns have to go through that process of notifying abutting towns if they might have a, a project that is potentially impactful?
Incinerator? Theoretically, well, theoretically, development of regional impact isn't only triggered by site plan review, it's triggered by any land use decision.
Yeah.
Including even a building permit, so that's a really interesting question and I do not know the answer to that, but I would
Should we return to the town of Ashland and request that they notify us if
Is there a project going on up here that everybody
Trash, municipal trash incinerator.
Waste to energy.
Yeah.
They're trying desperately to get that through.
Yeah. Hugely expensive project with a very, very long payout. But anyway, I'm just curious because I feel like to me, if that was a private project, it would trigger development of regional impact. I'm just, I'm just curious.
I wonder why a public project wouldn't.
I know, especially something like that, a facility like that. I can ask, I know the guy that runs Bridgewater Power, I can see if he did that, to do that.
Yeah. So, other thing is my term is up in April and I am not going to renew, so I just want to give everyone a heads up on that, so.
Oh.
Yeah. It's been nine and a half years, it's been a long time.
Yeah, you've been a great force. Thank you.
Are you three-year terms here? What are you, what's your term?
Three years.
Yeah, so.
And I have one thing I'd like to add to the meeting. It was very productive. I loved the dialogue and it is such a refreshing, and I'm glad you were there at the end to, at the end of your term to see this, come back to this, the way that it was. And I don't know if you guys realize how, how much of an impact Joseph has to this board, because he is doing a phenomenal job. I don't know if you've picked up on, he's not advocating, he doesn't pick a side. He is what the real deal, like when we had Ketchafox and Miriam Bader, and I just want to say thank you, Joseph, for everything you're doing for this town.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Thanks, Joseph. Thank you Rebecca for all you did.
Thank you, Judy.
And last thing I'll do is get the word natural resources in that subdivision regulation.
It was one of the change you wanted to, that you said needed to be
That was it, yeah. Yeah, it has to do with the application we rejected because for whatever reason was